2022 order. Carrie, could we have a roll call, please?
Sure, Councilmember Shippers?
I'm here. Oh, and I'm in Cadillac at home.
Councilmember Ellen Bass?
Present in Cadillac.
Ingalls? Councilmember King?
Here and in Cadillac.
And Mayor Philkins?
I am here and in the city of Cadillac.
Okay. So the first thing we need to do this evening is to approve the agenda as it has been presented.
I would make a motion to approve the agenda as presented. This is Ellen Bass.
Shippers, I support.
Carrie, could we have the roll call, please?
Sure, Councilmember Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls? King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries. We'll now open the floor for our first public comment. We do ask if you come forward, if you would please state your name and your address for the clerk. That would be very much appreciated. And also hold your comments to three minutes or less.
All right, Mayor, I see Conrad Ish has his hand raised.
Okay, Conrad.
Sir, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Yes, I did. Daryl Conrad Ish, 828 Aston Street, Cadillac, Michigan. I would first like to thank the city council for listening to public comment at the last meeting and tabling the state of emergency declaration and appointment of an emergency manager. I trust from the public statements made and communication I had that tonight we will put this to rest in proper and correct fashion. As the majority of councils aware, I've been very outspoken in my opposition of the Cadillac Castle project. I will not detail those objections at this time, but they're a matter of public record, and I urge you to read and review my remarks and opinions. If you consider a new public hearing on this issue, I urge you to consider these points. In all previous public meetings, the investor for Cadillac Castle as a non-owner and non-taxpayer was allowed as much time as he may consume to pitch and explain the project, receive many hours and resources from the city for purposes of research and presentation, and was able to answer publicly any questions that came up during these meetings. I, as the owner and taxpayer in the city of Cadillac, was substantial ownership in the notice zone, specifically lots 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 80, 81, 1, and 5, and the entire vacated alley representing 10 residential housing units, one of them being my primary residence, was granted only three minutes. I have intimate and integral knowledge of the 800 block of Aspen directly behind this proposed structure, the infrastructure on both Aspen Street and Mitchell Street, and the faults in the drive area by Dollar General, and the foot and vehicle traffic patterns in this area. My comments in their entirety were submitted to be entered into record every time I spoke, but yet at one meeting, I was able to speak longer than three minutes, and it came as a surprise to many of the members, the concerns and items I brought forward. In my mind, this meant my packet was never reviewed or given any consideration. I've had talks with the developer through this process, and in those talks, he has amended his plans more than once to take my concerns into consideration. These issues should have been pointed out by city staff, considering all the time and resources that the city was dedicated to helping him. In those discussions, I learned that the current proposed location was not his first choice. I found his actual first choice was on South Street. Very interesting, as I agreed. The South Street location is one block down, has better infrastructure for water, sewer, foot and vehicle traffic, and buildings such as the proposed are more in line with the surrounding structures. I believe the score the investor is searching for to secure funding would also be improved at this location. That property is now for sale on the open market and contains a blighted building in the city that has been vacant for years. Just a second, I urge the city at this point, after bending over backwards for quite some time, that you urge the investor to go back to the drawing board.
Conrad, your 30 minutes or your 3 minutes is up? Thank you.
Nice to meet you too, Mr.
What are these again?
Mayor, I don't see any other hands raised. I'm getting some background noise from one participant. I'm not sure if that means they want to speak or not.
Okay, if everyone could remember to mute their microphones unless they would like to speak, it would be very much appreciated.
I'll go ahead and.
If, thank you.
If anyone who's muted wishes to speak, please use the hand raise function or otherwise indicate. Not seeing any other indication, and there is no one in the waiting room.
Okay, then we're gonna go ahead and close public comment and move on to the approval of the consent agenda. This evening, we do have the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on December 17, or excuse me, December 7, 2020. T I, you're muted.
This is Councilmember Shippers. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Ellen Bass, second.
Carrie, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Ingalls? King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
And Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, item number four on our agenda this evening. We have an appointment or some appointments to be made, actually one appointment. Carrie, would you like to cover that for us?
Sir, I'm looking for my appointment in the packet. Here we go. Ann Ingalls has expressed interest in continuing her service on the Cadillac Historic District Commission for a three-year term and has been on the Cadillac Historic District Commission since 2015. The recommendation to reappoint Ann Ingalls to a three-year term on the Cadillac Historics District Commission.
This is Councilmember Shippers. I'd like to make a motion to approve the reappointment of Ann Ingalls to the Historic District Commission for a three-year term to expire on December 31, 2023.
This is Councilmember King. I'll support.
Carrie, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls? Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries. And so that will take us to the city manager's report for this evening. Marcus?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The first item on the manager's report this evening is a recommendation regarding the setting of our calendar year 2021 city council meeting schedule. As I think most of you are very familiar with, we traditionally do this at the end of the calendar year. We look ahead to see when the federal holidays are going to be and how that may or may not conflict with our traditional meeting schedule of being the first and third Mondays of the month. And then we make recommendations for council to consider approving. As you'll see in your packet, we have done so accordingly as well this time around. And I'll read you very quickly the recommendations. For the month of January, schedule one regular meeting for the third Tuesday of the month, January 19, 2021. Due to Christmas, New Years, and Martin Luther King Jr. holidays, city offices are closed December 24th, December 25th, and December 31st, as well as being closed January 1st and January 18th, 2021, respectively. Additionally, it's common for staff to take vacation in or personal time off during this timeframe. During the month of July, schedule one regular meeting for the third Monday, July 19, 2021, for similar reasons above. It's common for staff being off for the July 4th holiday as well. With respect to September, schedule the first meeting of the month for Tuesday, September 7th, due to city offices being closed on September 6th for Labor Day. And with respect to November, schedule one regular meeting for the third Monday, November 15th, 2021, due to the city general election scheduled for Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021. And as always, the city is always able to call a special meeting when necessary to conduct business should something arise in an urgent.
Hey, thank you, Marcus.
I'd make a motion to approve the calendar year 2021 council meeting schedule as presented. Ellen Bass, sir?
Councilmember King, I'll support.
Carrie, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls? King?
Yes.
And Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The next item under the manager's report is a recommendation regarding the Clam Lake Township Fire Agreement. This is with respect to the provision of both fire and emergency services to the Clam Lake Township by the city's fire department and the agency that we utilize for E M N services, emergency medical services. The agreement in its form really hasn't changed much at all. It'll continue to be valued at two mils payable to the city by Clam Lake Township for the said services. The term got extended because it currently ends at the end of this, at the end of this month. The term got extended four years to the end of December 2024. There's an automatic four-year renewal at that point in time that'll take it to December 31st of 2028. The only changes to the language within the agreement was to add standard language regarding listing Clam Lake Township as an additional insured. We did run that language by our insurance carrier, and they were satisfied with it the way that it was drafted. I would like to thank Stephen Kittler, the Clam Lake Township Supervisor, our Public Safety Director, Adam Aljeppgar, and our Finance Director, Owen Roberts, for all of their efforts and work on bringing forward this updated agreement, which coincidentally, Clam Lake Township did approve at one of their regular meetings earlier this month.
Okay, thank you, Marcus.
This is Councilmember Shippers. I would like to make a motion to approve the Clam Lake Township Fire and Emergency Services Agreement. Nice job, folks.
I would second that. Ellen Bass?
Carrie, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls? King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
And Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. With respect to our COVID-19 update this evening, I would just like to remind everybody to access the District 10 Health Department's website at www.dhd10.org. You'll find charts, graphs, stats regarding everything within the district. It's a 10-county district, obviously including Blackstone County, regarding all of the latest information about the pandemic and about current regulations via the Health Department that are in place that restrict various, various things that we're able to do, especially with respect to public gatherings and other such meetings and things of that nature. I would like to introduce Owen Roberts, our Finance Director at this time, to give a COVID-19 pandemic financial update. As members of council, I'm sure recall, we did put in place a COVID-19 Financial Response Plan as a part of our overall adoption of the budget earlier in the fiscal year. Given that we're at the end of the calendar year, and we believe that we're sort of seeing the light at the end of the tunnel with respect to the pandemic, hopefully, we thought it would be important to give council an update on our Financial Response Plan and also important to advise that I suspect earlier in the fiscal year in the first quarter, excuse me, earlier in the first quarter of the calendar year, there will be some items that were previously frozen, at least specific to the Utilities Department that I'm aware of, that we will need to look at moving forward, especially those that are going to be contingent on us maintaining compliance with our permitting. Without any further ado, Owen, if you wouldn't mind going through the few slides, that'd be great.
All right, thank you, Marcus. I'm just gonna share my screen here so that we can all see what we have going. And can you see the presentation right now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. Just want to be brief. Again, as always, if anyone would desire to take a deeper dive into any of this information, I would be happy to have that discussion anytime. So the following information will be an update to the city's COVID-19 Pandemic Financial Response Plan that was approved by council in May this year as part of the budget process. Primarily, this update will focus on revenue and what has taken place with the city's primary revenue sources since the approval of the original plan back in May. Firstly, though, I just wanted to confirm and report out, and you've heard this a couple of times, but the city has now received three grants directly related to the pandemic. So we have received so far CARES Act funds via three separate programs that you can see listed here, and I won't, I won't read those out, but you can see those. Total revenue received through these three programs is just over $300,000. $33,744 of that was replacement revenue for the city's August revenue sharing payment. $33,000 of that, and this was for the First Responder Program, provided funds for additional payments to the city's frontline public safety workers. And the remaining $233,000 was extra revenue that the city did not anticipate when the budget was adopted, nor did we incur any unique expenditures for, but simply the assumption was a diversion of all of our public safety payroll towards a pandemic response. In addition, we are expecting one additional payment through the third program listed on the slide, but unsure at this point what that payment will be. There was $200 million appropriated to that program in the state. The state received $350 million in applications for that. So the first payment where we received the $214,000, each applicant was paid 50% of what they had applied for. And from what they say, the rest will most likely be proportionately distributed to applicants once some additional information is collected by Treasury, which we've already submitted. Property tax revenues, again, this chart was in the Pandemic Financial Response Plan. Property taxes provide 56% of the revenues in the general fund. As discussed in May, our tax base for this revenue for the current fiscal year was established as of December 31 of 2019. So there will be very little change or volatility in this revenue source once this is established each year. This chart shows the relationship between assessed value and taxable value since the last recession in 2008. And really, very simply, it just highlights the fact that taxable value, which is the blue bar, changes less dramatically, both on the upside and the downside, than assessed value. So this makes this revenue more stable. For the current year, there is still about a $30,000 revenue cushion between budgeted revenue and projected total property tax revenue that we'll receive. Talking about the future related to property taxes, we currently have a $54 million or 20% gap between assessed and taxable value. And I'm sure you've heard this before, but that's just that whole Proposal A where the taxable value is restricted to CPI growth. The state recently confirmed that the CPI inflation factor for 2021 will be 1.4%. So really, it is nearly certain that taxable value will experience a slight amount of growth, at least for the next budget year. 1% growth computes to about $30,000 in revenue. So every 1% is $30,000. Specifically now related to revenue sharing is the second most significant revenue source for the general fund. So what I'm trying to show in the two charts here are the state's projections based, the original projections came from the state in February. And then we built our original budget proposal based on those projections. And so you can see that we budget slightly below what those original projections were. But now you can see how the projections since, since May, which was the first one after the pandemic hit, really has improved for the city. And overall, now we're within about $23,000 of what we had budgeted originally. If you remember when we first passed the Financial Response Plan in May, we had anticipated a loss of $115,000 to the general fund, but that is now down to $23,000. So moving in the right direction, and that's just specific to the total of statutory and constitutional revenue sharing. So in total, we now anticipate receiving just under 1.1 million in total revenue sharing compared to a total combined budget of $1,120,000. So the red line in these charts just helps to highlight how the most recent projections from August compare to the city's 2021 budgeted revenue for state shared revenue. So these projections, again, certainly are moving in an encouraging direction. Moving on to funds distributed from the Michigan Transportation Fund. This is the Act $51 from primarily gas taxes and vehicle registrations. And this flows into our major and local street funds. The charts above, or the chart above, shows how these projections changed throughout the spring and into the summer as the impacts of the pandemic were better understood. Again, the orange line, which is the highest line, this was the projections originally that we built our our budget concepts really around. Because this revenue has been increasing due to some reforms related to it, we have budgeted conservatively each year for the growth. And so, you know, the red arrows I want to highlight point to where we are from our budget, actual in fiscal year 20, or in fiscal, actual budget, excuse me, in fiscal year 21, and then projections that we use as we develop some longer-term, five-year financial projections. And so the green bar definitely is projecting these revenues on the conservative side, which makes it easier to make mid-year adjustments. So still for the current budget year, even with the impacts of the pandemic, the city expects to receive several thousand dollars more than what we've currently budgeted. Moving on to our metered user charges in the Water and Sewer Fund. These charts show three-year trends in this metered water and sewer user charges. The water user charges have slightly increased over these three years, but sewer charges have dipped slightly. Both of these revenue sources may miss the budget for the year, and so we are continuing to closely monitor those. And we have had some positive trends on the spending side that should keep us in good condition as we, as we move closer towards the end of the year. But we are watching these trends closely in order to protect the stability of these operations. The one other revenue that we discussed in the original Pandemic Response Plan was interest income. The conservative fixed income investment market that the city is required to operate in really has declined significantly since the first of the year. Just as an example, as of December 31, 2019, yields on three-year treasury notes, which we use as a benchmark in our investment plan, was 1.62%. And as of November 30th, this rate is now down to 0.19%. So about an 88% decline. So as the city's investments mature and have to be reinvested at these substantially lower rates, this is going to have a negative impact on these revenues, which we did address as part of the financial plan. This will cause loss of revenue of about $30,000 or $40,000 across all of the city's funds. So this won't all impact one fund. Lastly, just on the spending side, real quickly, current year expenditures are within expectations and projections across all funds, with the exception really of the two emergency repairs that we've, we've had to report out here over the last few months and that will need to be amended into the budget later tonight, where we'll talk about those in a little more detail. Over half a million dollars in capital spending remains frozen for the year. This was one of the things that we did in the, in the plan in May. And as Marcus said, we do anticipate bringing a recommendation to council early in the first quarter of '21 regarding which of those capital items could or should still be pursued within the fiscal year. That still gives us time to develop specs and bids and take care of those. So again, anyone that desires a deeper dive into that, happy to do that anytime. Are there any questions that you would have for me tonight, though? All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Owen. Next on our agenda, we have to have a couple of ordinances that we need to introduce. Marcus, would you like to move us through those?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The first item for consideration this evening is to adopt a resolution that will introduce an ordinance to amend Section 12-94 of our city code regarding the duration of the Cadillac Castle service charge in lieu of taxes and set a public hearing for January 19, 2021. Very similar to what city council had to do several times over with respect to the housing development owned by the Woda Group, where we needed to extend the timeframe in our, in our code by amending the ordinance that would allow for the Woda Group to continue with their project. We have received a similar request from Phil Cybert Equities, the developer that is interested in building Cadillac Castle. And just for reference and as a refresher, Cadillac Castle is a senior living housing development that P S Equities would like to construct on Mitchell Street, south of our core downtown area, generally speaking, across the street on the west side from Dairy Queen. Again, the request is this evening to set the public hearing for January 19th. And then the request itself within the ordinance, amending the ordinance, would be to extend it from 36 months to 48 months, which essentially adds an additional year for the developer to apply to the Michigan State Housing Development Authority with regard to getting necessary incentives from the state to make the project feasible reality. So I'm not sure if there's any questions at this point, but the request this evening is to just set the public hearing for the night.
Okay, thank you, Marcus. Are there any questions, or would someone entertain the motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to introduce ordinance to amend Section 12-94 of the city code regarding duration of the Cadillac Castle service charge in lieu of taxes and set a public hearing for January 19, 2021. Ellen Bass?
This is King. I'll support.
Carrie, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Ingalls? Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
And Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The next request for council consideration this evening is to adopt a resolution that introduces ordinance to approve the exchange of real property within the James E. Hafn Industrial Park and to set a public hearing for January 19, 2021. To give you some brief background as to what this is in regard to, this is with respect to essentially the swapping of property that Consumers Energy currently owns and occupies in the Cadillac Industrial Park immediately adjacent to Spencer Plastics for property that is essentially one parcel away to their east that's owned by the city. By swapping the property with the city, this will By swapping the property with the city, this will accommodate the need for Spencer Plastics to eventually expand their footprint. And we are in discussions with Spencer Plastics accordingly regarding that, that eventual expansion to their, to their business. This evening, we're simply looking again at setting a public hearing. The public hearing would be for January 19th. Also, for reference purposes, the Cadillac Industrial Fund did unanimously approve their support for this, for this swap. And it is anticipated that between now and the 19th, this item will also be in front of the Planning Commission for their consideration in terms of a recommendation of support as well.
Thank you, Marcus. Does anybody have any questions? And if not, would someone entertain a motion?
As Councilmember Shippers, I will make a motion to adopt the resolution to introduce ordinance to approve exchange of real property within James E. Potvin Industrial Park and set a public hearing for January 19, 2021.
Ellen Boss, second.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Boss?
Yes.
Ingles? Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries. Okay. Go ahead.
I was, I just realized it's in a new section, but sorry for interrupting you, Mayor.
No, that's okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the City Council. Next section that we're under now is adoption of ordinances and resolutions. We also have a, a couple of items under this section as well. The first one is with respect to the adoption of a resolution that authorizes the notice of intent regarding Act 94 requirements and the declaration of intent to reimburse our water, reimburse the city for our water system improvements. This is all with respect to the utilization of the drinking water revolving fund, loan dollars for the future development of the new well field that we are in the process of putting in place. And Owen, I don't know if you'd like to add some more detailed information to that?
No, this is a standard resolution to approve the notice of intent as we have to do with each and every bond issue that we do, even though we're getting this from the state through the DWRF, essentially we issue the bonds and the state buys them directly. And we're looking at a 30-year term at a rate just over 2.0, about 2.1%, 2 and 3 eighths essentially, so 2 and an eighth, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? If not, would someone entertain a motion?
I'd make a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing notice of intent, re Act 94 requirements and declaration of intent to reimburse water system improvements. Ellen Boss?
Shippers? Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Steve.
I'll, I'll support, this is King.
Councilmember Shipper?
Yes.
Ellen Boss?
Yes.
Ingles? King?
Yes.
And Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the City Council. As this is our, our last meeting of the calendar year, we traditionally bring forward at year end any necessary budget-related amendment items for your consideration. Typically, as you know, we do this at calendar year end, at fiscal year end, as well as anytime we have any sort of real sizable new revenue or expense that was unplanned for, we'll, we'll bring it forward for council consideration at that time as well. And so this evening, there are a handful of items that we would like council to consider in terms of amending the budget. And Owen, if you would please walk us through them, that would be wonderful.
Sure, no problem. So if you are on Exhibit A of the budget amendment document, it starts with the general fund and wanted to get in there the adjustments to the revenue, really to show the complete picture for council, that the, the financial picture has improved, especially since we passed the, the response plan and, and have received the, the CARES Act dollars. So what this does is it just adjusts the revenue amounts, recognizing the receipt of the CARES Act dollars and then the reductions to the other sources. In the police department, this makes an appropriation to cover those payments that we were able to make using the hazard pay premium program. Again, that was 100% reimbursement of the, the, the $1,000 payment. Same thing for the fire department. That's a reflection of those hazard pay premium dollars, again, 100% reimbursed by the state. Moving to the second page, other financing uses, this is an amount to transfer out when we reported the, the boiler system that had melted in the Naval Reserve facility and went out and, and got some, some quotes on that and had to do the emergency repair. We also, while they were in there, had to end up replacing the hot water heater. So we need to have some funds transferred out from the general fund to the Naval Reserve Center Fund. That fund does not have sufficient reserves to cover this substantial of a repair. And so the, the appropriation will be to transfer those funds out. In the Naval Reserve Center Fund itself, moving on in Page 2, just recognizes the transfer in of that same $20,000, the increase in the expenditure to cover the, the replacement of the, the boiler system. Incidentally, it's the one boiler that runs the whole facility, so it is a pretty substantial piece of equipment. And so that, that appropriates funds to cover that repair cost. The other emergency repairs, you remember, I believe this was the last council meeting, where there was the line that originally looked like a, a customer issue and that once they dug it up, it was determined that it was a city issue. So while they already had the street dug up, they did go ahead and, and repair that. And so this amends that expense into the, the budget for that repair. And that's all, so all things that really have come before council before. Happy to answer any questions.
I have one question, Owen.
Yes, sir.
Maybe it's not the appropriate time, but listening to this meeting, I was thinking about our, the possibility that we tabled the new sign down in the park in front of the pavilion. Is, is that on there somewhere or has that just disappeared?
Well, that was an appropriation from the prior fiscal year, so that's something that we would still like to do. And that's, that will probably be part of our first quarter recommendation to council. I think the, there was no objection to the concept. I think it was just making sure that the timing was right and, and something that we think would really be an enhancement to the, the park system. So that's not on here at this point, but I believe that will be part of the, the recommendation, probably in the first quarter of the year.
Glad to hear it, I don't want to forget about it. Be a nice.
If I may, Owen and members of the City Council, we, you know, we froze all of these various projects, but they're, they're still in the budget. The, the ones that, that our finance director just went through are those that, that were not in the budget, which is why we need to add them.
Thank you.
This is Councilmember Shippers. I will make a motion to adopt the resolution amending General Appropriations Act for fiscal year 2021.
Ellen Boss will second that.
Councilmember Ellen Boss?
Yes.
Ingles? King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
And Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries. So we do have in our packets the minutes from the last Downtown Development Authority, and those minutes are also available on the city website, should any of the public like to see those. And so that will take us to our last public comment this evening, and it's set up the same way as the first.
Mayor Philkins, Conrad Ish has raised his hand.
Okay.
Daryl Conrad Ish, 828 Aspen Street. I've been approached by a number of people locally over the past few weeks. What is important for every citizen to understand is we are all citizens and we all have a voice. I've utilized my voice and others joined me in the last city council meeting to voice our opinions over an agenda item that was scheduled. That resulted or should result in our voices being heard and that item being tabled, which ultimately should result in a proper resolution. The City Council deserves credit for doing the right thing, and every person that spoke out at the last meeting deserves credit for voicing their opinion. I've learned a lot through my activism this year with everything going on. One thing people forget and need to be reminded about our government and politics is that we, the people, are the driving force. If you don't vote, if you don't voice your opinions, if you stand on the sidelines and blame government, you are part of the problem. I understand that it seems like you are smaller than them or less significant. Let me tell you, you are not. Most people seek public office feeling a calling or a duty to help society. Yes, some, maybe even here locally, have an ego or an agenda. The answer to that is the voting booth. For most who are in public office, they ran to serve people. That means all of us, conservative, liberal, independent, it doesn't matter. Every constituent has a voice. It seems locally, statewide and nationally, many people have fallen into the trap of their voices don't matter. Our voices should matter, and if they don't, there's a breakdown in our democratic republic. I urge every citizen with an opinion, issue or question about what is going on in our city to get involved. Ask questions, give your opinion and contact your council member. They represent us, but if you don't express your thoughts to them, they don't have an opportunity to represent you. Honestly, government service at the council level is a thankless duty. The pay is not even close to compensating them for what they do. Please don't call them and yell and complain about what they should have done. They aren't mind readers and they also have careers aside from council and family, just like you. What our council members need is a pulse on the precincts and a pulse on the city of Cadillac. They will appreciate your input. If for whatever reason you feel uncomfortable approaching them, feel free to approach me. I will make myself available to bridge a gap, to find answers to questions if necessary. Hopefully the staff and council understand I do this with no agenda. I do this no matter your political affiliation. It is important for us to be involved in our government. Please reach out to me if it feels more comfortable to you. I can be reached at Conrad Ish, K-O-N-R-A-D-I-S-H on Facebook. My cell phone number is 231-429-5816. Also, anyone who feels the calling.
Okay, Conrad, thank you, your three minutes is up.
Thank you.
Mayor Philkins, I see that Tony Ish has his hand raised as well.
Okay, Tony?
I would like to give my three minutes to my dad.
We can't do that, Tony, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much, have a great night.
Thank you.
Mayor Philkins, I do not see anyone else with their hands raised and there is no one in the waiting room.
Okay, thank you. Then we're going to go ahead and close public comment. And we do have a couple of tabled items on the agenda this evening. Marcus, do you want to cover that?
Sure, thank you, Mayor and members of the City Council. At your last council meeting, there were two items on the agenda. One was a resolution to appoint the city manager as emergency coordinator, which would have been step one required prior to then the second resolution, which was a resolution declaring local state of emergency due to the COVID-19 pandemic. At the meeting, the city attorney briefed council as to the, the two steps and the reasons why, and also advised council at the time that it was anticipated that the state of Michigan would be making an effort to extend the Open Meetings Act statutory deadline accordingly before the end of the calendar year and that at the time that the information was, was provided, that was somewhat uncertain. I can advise that at this time, that the legislature has approved the extension accordingly that would allow for electronic meeting of public bodies within the Open Meetings Act through the end of March 2021. It is completely anticipated, fully expected that the governor will sign that into law before the end of the calendar year, which is when the Open Meetings Act deadline with respect to electronic meeting currently ends. And therefore, at this point in time, there is no action at all to take regarding these items. We do expect that probably sometime early in the, in the next year, we'll ask council to consider a resolution of support that simply appoints the county who's already providing us with emergency management services officially in that role. But that's, that's something that we're not looking at doing tonight, and again, there is no action for council to take at all. So purely for informational purposes.
All right, thank you, Marcus.
Thank you.
All right, let's move to the good of the order. Does anyone have anything this evening?
I just wanted to say thank you to everyone on council for a great year. Thank you to staff for a great year, certainly a challenging year, albeit this global pandemic, but certainly wish everyone happy holidays and a happy new year.
Thank you. I, I have one thing, the solar farm is coming along nicely. I live right down the road from it, drive by it every day, the panels are going up. It's a big improvement over a burned down factory. My wife did comment that she thought some flowers would look nice. We hydro seeded it, so it's going to be nice and green, but some flowers planted or something, and I told her that was a great idea. She wanted to get involved with the planning, the city would like that. She wasn't real keen on that idea, but I do think that I was sprucing it up a little bit, make it look better, but it looks good, much better than what was there.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank Conrad Ish for his comments tonight. I think it's critical that, that everybody stays involved. That's what makes our system work and gives people confidence in the system, and the system only works while there's confidence. I would like to explore in relation to public hearings, when we have interested parties, and I don't know, Mayor, how we would do it, but especially if people who are interested parties want to notify us ahead of time, giving them a larger chunk than the three-minute period, if there's information they need to have council know and how we could do that in ordered fashion, because with a public hearing, it can be hard to get your points across in that three minutes. And I'd also invite people to get council their packets of information before a meeting like that, so we can consider it before we come in, in case there's any concerns that way. So thank you, and, and we want people to be involved and to be part of the process. The other thing I wanted to mention is I think city staff has done a really nice job in trying, especially in these COVID times, to help people have a voice. But in some of our economic efforts to do the social zones, try to help downtown, exploring, working with our downtown restaurants even more in helping them set up what they need to do, since we see these periods of times that only outdoor service can happen, if we can have staff help some of our people who own those businesses get through the process, which can seem onerous. I want to make sure downtown knows we're there to support them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shippers, I'll second what everybody has said so far. Also, I want to assure Mr., is it Conrad Ish? I, I don't know if, what it is, but I want to assure him that we did receive his written comments in full, and I did read them all and appreciate both sets of your comments that, that you said. Also want to say thanks to all the people in the community who have decked out their houses. It's been added a little bit of normalcy in these crazy times to be able to take my little grand twins out and, and drive around and see all the pretty lights that people have put out. So thank you for doing that and stay safe. So thank you for doing that, and stay safe, be careful out there. Things are, it's not gone yet, even though we've got this vaccine on the way, we still have to be mindful to take care of one another by taking care of ourselves as well. So Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year, and we'll see you next year.
Thank you. I would echo everything that has been said by everyone else in the Good of the Order, and you know, certainly Conrad Ish said earlier that, you know, we don't become a part of the City Council or a public servant because, you know, we have an agenda. It's because we want to make a difference. And I appreciate Conrad's passion and echo what Councilmember King said, that we all need to be involved, and we all need to make sure that everyone's voices are heard, appreciated, and respected. And I think that the council that we have does a good job with that. And the more conversation we can generate, especially in this year that we've all had, you know, people are anxious and people want to make sure that we're all going down the right path, and we need to do it together. And so I really appreciate that, and I am so grateful for all that the city staff has done this year. It's been very challenging, and I think that you all have worked so incredibly hard together to get us through this storm. It was, I was sharing earlier before we opened up the meeting, that I had the opportunity to receive the first vaccine this morning, and it's the first of two shots, but I feel like I'm 50% of the way there. And it's really, really exciting here at the hospital. And for those of you who are willing to take that vaccine, it's going to get us to the end of this road in a really, really important fashion. So with that, I just want to say thank you to all of the council members for how you have served and serving together for the citizens of Cadillac. I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, including Laura and Mike. And that's all we have for this evening, so thank you very much, everyone. Good night.
Thanks, everyone, good night.
Good night.
Good night, everybody, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.